It is the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. We're here every single day from five to six talking about the local issues that matter to you most and taking your phone calls at 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222. Your emails as well at randykabc@gmail.com. Follow me on social media at Randy Wang Radio and search for the KABC News Blitz wherever you get your podcasts. Like and subscribe and share them with your friends and on your Facebook groups. Well, here we are. Is it going to be day five of the LA riots? We're going to find out. Protesters did just a few minutes ago try to walk onto the 101 freeway, but they were shut down. Something is going on today where it looks like LAPD has been given the order to finally do what they wanted to do from the beginning, and that's crack down on this nonsense before it gets out of control. Of course, last night, we saw looting of several shops in downtown LA, including an Apple store and an Adidas store and a whole bunch of jewelry stores that turns out didn't even have insurance. Unbelievable. Karen Bass is supposed to have a press conference this hour. We will go to it if it seems interesting. I think she's going to announce a curfew in downtown LA, five days too late to get rid of some of the wilding. But I want to go to LA City Council meeting today because the LA City Council meeting today was fascinating. They had Jim McDonald, the chief of LAPD, in the hot seat to grill him on the LAPD response. And of course, most members of the LA City Council are anti-LAPD, and they don't like that LAPD was even there stopping the wilding from going on. And one member of the LA City Council, now she's not a declared member of the DSA. In fact, sometimes she says some things that are outright opposing to the Democrat socialist like Unicef.
Yes!
And that's Amel de Padilla.
The neighborhood kids, the down ass kids, don't like it.
And I'm going to play you her exchange with Jim McDonald in full because it is fascinating. This happened just a few hours ago at LA City Hall.
Councilmember Padilla.
Okay, so again, tensions are high. And I giggle at your last comment about the amount of restraints that your police officers are using a holdback because I believe you. But I think that that's also very true with those who are protesting. Right, I think they, the tensions are high. Those who are protesting want to get louder. They want to get more violent.
Wait, what? All we've been hearing all day is that the people that have been violent are not the protesters, they're the agitators that come in afterwards. But there's Amel de Padilla saying the protesters are the ones that want to get louder and more violent.
Those who are protesting want to get louder. They want to get more violent. I mean, what else can you do? You're attacking their parents, you're attacking their, their family members, and it doesn't feel like it's an even playing field. And I just want to know, I'm, I have a few questions. And I just want you to know that they're always with the intention of figuring out how to make sure that our community doesn't dislike its police department.
Okay.
You know, and it's important to me. I, I'm going to start with a story. When I was in college and I went to go learn how to be a community organizer in Texas, Oyltown, Texas, a cohort of us interns from all over the country were working.
What kind of program is this? She's a community organizer. I think she went to Berkeley and she goes to Texas to a day laborer center?
Were working with a day labor center because there was a rise in Minutemen who were harassing them. And as part of our coalition, there was a police officer, and I was the only LA person there who was shocked that there was a police officer in our coalition. And I had people from the South and a bunch of folks from New York and New Jersey ask me, you must be from Los Angeles. They said, why would you, how do you know? Because only people from Los Angeles don't trust their police department.
Yeah, and that's more at these days than indictment of Los Angeles than indictment of the LAPD. We're not talking about the 1992 days.
There's nothing irregular with having a police officer help us fight the injustices of the Minutemen who are harassing the workers. And it always stood with me that it is possible for your community to not feel the way people like myself maybe grew up with the experiences that we had in the nineties. And I think that this is a really good time for us to really prove that things have changed. Now, as leaders, we're doing our part, asking our folks to protest peacefully.
How's that working out? Oh, there was a whole bunch of looting last night, and someone took a hammer and started hammering away the sidewalk so they could start throwing rocks at cars again.
But I still think we need to do more to be creative about really showing that this is a department that cares about the people of Los Angeles. And as a paramilitary organization, is responsive to those above it, like the council and the mayor. And now, and I know that there's policies that sometimes trigger you being responsive and in cahoots with other law agencies.
In cahoots? What she's talking about, what, what the LA City Council, and not specifically Amel de, but people like Hugo are really upset about, is when ICE called LAPD for assistance for backup after their officers were being assaulted by protesters, that LAPD responded. They didn't think LAPD should assist another law enforcement agency when they're being attacked. That's pissing them off.
But I still think that more can be done. So here's my questions.
All right, here we go. These are the important questions that Amel de Padilla thought about all day that she was going to ask new LA Police Chief Jim McDonald on how we can improve on these situations. Is it going to be questions about what do we need to do to signal to you that we're not going to go after your officers for doing their job? No.
My understanding is that for folks who do engage in terrorizing the vehicles and in the looting, technology has changed. You have the technology now to find them and arrest them. Is that correct?
Well, we have technology that will certainly help us do that in, in many cases, and we're going to go aggressively after those that we have on video to be able to identify them and hold accountable for their actions.
Uh, we'll see. I mean, if they're wearing a mask, that might be difficult. We do have a different DA, so this isn't going to be like in 2020.
My understanding too is that now with AI, if somebody breaks into a car, it's so much more faster to find out if they've like taken off to other parts of the county, correct?
It's just a little strange to me how many members of our city council just kind of sound illiterate.
My understanding too is that now with AI, if somebody breaks into a car, it's so much more faster to find out if they've like taken off to other parts of the county, correct?
Yeah, potentially the cars could be tracked, some depending on the type of car.
And if it has LoJack.
Would it also be dependent on the AI technology?
I don't know what you're referring to about that.
Neither do I. What AI technology is she talking about?
Well, I just had a case in my district where I was told that they broke into a car. And with AI, the police officers were able to find it.
Yeah. AI is a broad term. I'm not sure on what tool they, they mean. There's a lot of tools out there and a lot of investigative tactics to find people, and we'll use whatever's available legally to us to hold people accountable.
Okay, so then I guess my next question would probably be for whoever has the expertise of technology for your department.
I think if you narrow the question down, what do you mean by AI?
Well, that's where I'm getting to.
Jim McDonald doesn't know where she's going with this. I don't know where she's going with this. You don't know where she's going with this. And dare I say, Amel de Padilla doesn't know where she's going with this.
Broken Wendy theory.
Well, we know about that.
Can we use technology like AI technology to create a situation where your department can identify, hey, there's agents, non-city of LA, in a neighboring town? Everyone go on alert in a way where you can support our business community and our immigrant community to know that it's time, that something related to the lack of due process, the lack of warrants is about to hit our, our town?
What is she asking the chief of police to do? I'm a little confused.
I'm asking a creativity question here.
Even the chief is confused. All right, simplify this. Amel, what are you asking the chief of police?
What can your department do to do more to warn us, to warn the business community that outside of our LA borders, coming in from Inglewood, coming in from, I don't know Valley, I don't know, you can warn us so that we can warn our folks in the spirit of your loyalty to the city of Los Angeles?
So you're asking me to warn you about an enforcement action being taken by another agency before it happens?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we can't do that.
What does it say when our lawmakers, which the city council is a legislative branch, they make the laws, have such a small understanding of the law or such a disregard for the law that they are in a city council meeting, an official hearing, asking the chief of police to break the law?
Why not?
That would be obstruction of justice. You may want to talk to the city attorney about that.
Is there any way with technology, you find out about an ICE raid, you could tell us so we could warn everybody? No, that's illegal. That's against the law. But Amel de Padilla doesn't take no for an answer, now does she?
Where's the city attorney? Aren't they here? I see her officers, where's she?
We'll hear from the city attorney after we hear from LAPD. We can re, we can revisit it then.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, I'm, they're in route. We know they're coming. We know they're coming to bring disruption.
We cannot obstruct another law enforcement agency just because you disagree with them. What they are doing is totally legal. And as much as there's talk about, oh, they didn't have warrants, the specific raid, the one that got all of this off on Friday, did have a warrant signed by a judge. Ask Bill Assale himself. It was about going after employers who were taking advantage of employees. Maybe they were in the country illegally, but they were using false documents and they were giving these people unfair hours, all the talk about wage theft, but you don't want any kind of investigation like that. But no, 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 no. If we ever hear that ICE is coming, we need you to warn us so we can prepare. That's not how this works.
There's no way that we can know?
I can't, I don't know how to even respond to that.
Jim McDonald is not your typical LAPD chief because he's not going to just go along with what the crazies in elected office say. He doesn't need this job. He took this job because he grew up in this department and he loves the department, but he is not just going to go along with the party line. He's the one that spoke out against what Karen Bass was saying and saying, yes, we were overwhelmed, they were violently attacking our officers on Sunday.
Wasn't she just here? Who took her?
Okay, now, Amel de Padilla doesn't want to talk to the chief anymore. She wants to talk to the city attorney about why the LAPD chief says the thing that she just asked the LAPD chief to do is totally illegal.
Where'd she go?
We'll, we'll come back. She had to attend to some other business, but we can come back. We'll give you the opportunity to ask her that question.
Well, I need to know.
Yeah, we don't do that. We, we, we're not going to, we're not going to broadcast for, like, the FBI is looking for a terrorist suspect, say, right? Are we going to tell, you know, hey, the FBI is coming looking for you?
Yeah, but see, there's a difference between someone's coming because they're going to, you know, go get.
I'm using that as an example, but no, we're not allowed to do that. That would be completely inappropriate and illegal.
Either Amel de Padilla does not have any understanding of the law, or she thinks that, well, the city of LA doesn't have to follow federal laws, which is the whole point of our sanctuary city status.
The neighborhood kids, the down ass kids, don't like it.
It wasn't just Amel de Padilla who was causing all kinds of confusion and making strange requests at the LAPD. It's time once again to bring up Mr. DSA himself, Hugo Soto Martinez.
Clap that up.
Because Hugo had a bone to pick with LAPD.
But seeing LAPD what appears to give safe passage to ICE on Friday does not help the situation. It, it builds distrust from the community with LAPD. And I get it, you, you can respond to that if you want, but you're going to say, we don't engage in it. I, I'll, I'll put finish in a minute. We don't engage in that. But it's the perception that matters. It is the feelings that matter from the people of Los Angeles.
Hugo Soto Martinez thinks that it was inappropriate for the LAPD to answer a call from help from ICE on Friday when they were being physically assaulted by protesters. Unfortunately, this is what happens when so few people pay attention to local politics. Because these members of the city council, whether it's Unicef Hernandez.
Yes!
Hugo Soto Martinez.
You know, let's criminalize catalytic converters, let's criminalize copper.
Even Amel de freaking Padilla.
Broken Wendy theory.
They got elected with very low turnout. They got elected with very low voter participation. And I don't know how many people care at this point, but I have a feeling in the next election, we need to have more people pay attention to who they're putting into government. Because of the 10% of voters that voted in that special election to replace Nury Martinez, well, of that 10%, more than half said Amel is for the job. So what are you looking at? 5% of the population that could vote said yes, Amel. And now you have a sitting member of the LA City Council openly asking in an official hearing for the chief of police to break the law? We live in some fascinating times. We'll see if the mayor goes to her press conference. She's supposed to announce a curfew tonight to stop all the looting and the wilding. Apparently, there is a wildfire breaking out in Burbank, so now we have other fires to deal with besides the Waymo fires. Apparently, it's the Bethany Fire. If you're in the woodland area of Burbank, there are evacuation orders going in. We'll check in on that. It's riot day five here on the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. It is day five of the 2025 LA riots. We had people walking onto the 101 freeway earlier. LAPD was pretty forceful in shutting that down. We are awaiting a press conference from LA Mayor Karen Bass, where she's probably going to downplay the violence, talk about how LAPD has everything under control, and we have no need for the National Guard. Although, based on previews from her talking to MSNBC about two hours ago, it looks like she is going to hold a press conference to be instituting a curfew tonight in Los Angeles. Here's what she said to MSNBC.
Alicia, thanks so much. I'm here outside the city's emergency operations center with Mayor Bass. Mayor Bass, good to see you. Thank you for joining us live on MSNBC. Let me start with the curfew. You mentioned earlier today in a press availability that you were considering putting into place a curfew tonight in Los Angeles. Will there be a curfew tonight in Los Angeles?
I believe there will. We are working on the details right now, and so I.
It's getting kind of late. Shouldn't we be unveiling those details? I mean, you have people right now that are sharpening their sticks and getting their hammers ready and getting their incendiary devices and their Molotov cocktails ready for night five of wilding.
Next one or two hours, we'll be able to announce whether we're going to.
Will it be a citywide curfew?
No, 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 no. I think it's so important for people to understand that this is not a citywide issue. This is a few blocks within downtown. Now, I don't want to underplay it. It's significant, but it is not our entire city.
No, it's such a big city. It's only one small portion. I mean, it's downtown LA. It's where we want a whole bunch of people to go for the Olympics. It's where the convention center is and the Lakers and LA Live. And no, it's just a small, small, small part. But this is what they've been doing all day, all week, is downplaying the violence. Karen Bass, for many days, was making excuses for the violence, blaming the violence on the federal government, which is complete nonsense. But we're going to see what happens tonight. We're going to see if she happens to hold this press conference and announce a curfew. We've already seen people walking onto the freeway today, and that is not the agitators that take over at night. Oh, wait, there's more walking on the streets right now in downtown LA as you're seeing Mexican flags flying and people walking into traffic because I guess these things don't matter. This is not some official organized demonstration. You don't do that while you're blocking traffic, literally walking in front of cars, literally screwing up traffic for anybody that's trying to get through. Once again, it's happening, and it seems to be happening every single day. And until you allow the police to do their job and give them the sufficient numbers of backup, whether that's through the sheriff's department, through neighboring agencies, or even, I don't know, the National Guard, you've got to shut this down. We'll continue to follow this. If Karen Bass goes to her press conference, we will take it. If not, you'll hear Karen Bass's press conference from this morning, which was also full of nonsense. 800-222-KABC is the phone number, 1-800-222-5222. Do you think things are going to calm down tonight, or do you think it's going to be night five of insanity in downtown LA? 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. It is the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. We're here every single day from five to six talking about the local issues that matter to you most, taking your phone calls at 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222. Your emails as well at randykabc@gmail.com. Give me a follow on social media at Randy Wang Radio and search for the KABC News Blitz wherever you get your podcasts. It is day five of the anti-ICE demonstrations, or as some people would call it, the LA riots, as I'm seeing a whole bunch of people taking over the streets of downtown LA once again, blocking traffic. They tried to get on the 101 freeway earlier, but that was shut down. We'll see if Karen Bass is going to be instituting a curfew like she has teased in earlier press conferences. She is already 20 minutes late for the press conference that she told the media she would have about all this. If she does do that before 6 o'clock, we'll go to it. But I have a press conference from this morning that's full of Karen Bass nonsense, and we'll go to that. But first, let's go to Bill in La Cañada. Bill, hello.
Hey, Randy, here's a short quiz. What do you call it when two or more people get together and try to break the law with some kind of plan? What do you call that?
I think you'd call it a conspiracy.
Bingo. So I want to go further than what you said about Amel. She's on the record now in front of millions of people as conspiring with the police chief of all people to violate federal law, which is not only stupid, but it's a violation of the Constitution and her oath. In Article Six of the Constitution, orders all state officials, including legislators, to uphold federal law. And if they don't, they're not, they're basically committing insurrection. So I don't know what this lady is thinking, you know, with broken Wendy theory and all this stuff, but I haven't heard anything this stupid since Wendy Sinek of the La Cañada School District tried to explain restorative justice.
It really was something, I, I had to do a double take when I was skimming the audio. I was like, what's Amel going to say? And then she openly is asking the chief of police to obstruct justice and doesn't understand why there's a problem with it and wants to check with the city attorney. It is a quite fascinating moment to be in Los Angeles politics right now.
Don't criminalize concrete. Don't criminalize fire. Don't criminalize scooters.
Thanks so much for the call, Bill. Appreciate it. 800-222-KABC is the phone number, 1-800-222-5222. Do you think it's time for a curfew? Do you think things are going to calm down tonight, or are we in for night five of looting? Let's go to Paige in LA. Paige, hello.
Hey, this is a little complicated, but I have been battling the gas powered leaf blowers that have been banned for 27 years. And the city will not enforce the ban. The governor will not enforce the ban. City council, mayor's office will not enforce the ban. They tell me that I need to take a picture and report the address with a, through the 311 app. And I did that today, and I had a gardener get really like aggressive towards me. He walked towards my car. I unrolled my window to explain that those machines are illegal. They've been banned for 27 years. They cause breast cancer. He started blowing his machine right into my window. I rolled up my window and he aggressively grabbed my car doors, trying to open my door. He was, if he'd have gotten it, he would have hurt me. I think what is going on, what they, they are creating, the government, by being so siding with one side on this, is creating an entitlement and an aggression and a danger that goes beyond just the protesters.
Well, and it's a perfect example of what our sanctuary policies do. Because you're right, it's been on the books for a very long time that gas powered leaf blowers are banned. And they contribute emissions, which we seem to care about when it comes to tailpipe. These things are very bad for the air. They're awful for noise pollution. They're also not super efficient because they're just blowing the leaves from one side of the street to the other. But we don't enforce that law because the, most of the people who are breaking that law, they don't want to arrest. And this has been true for decades.
But, but when they start to get violent with people simply for being, doing what they are told to do by the city, that's, I've never seen that before. And it's, I think it's directly related to these protests that this guy got like that aggressive towards me.
Unfortunately, when you see lawlessness on the television every single day in Los Angeles, it really doesn't make anyone think that they need to respect the law. Heck, we had a member of the LA City Council openly asking the police chief to break the law. Thank you so much for the call, Paige. Appreciate it. All right, Karen Bass, no press conference? Don't want to be on time for people? That's fine. We'll go to her press conference this morning where she was asked about the looting last night.
Thanks, Mayor Bass. I know that you're saying that some of the violence that we've seen, the chaos later in the evenings, that it's only limited to a few streets, but it does seem to be ramping up. There was a lot of looting last night spreading to other parts of downtown LA. I know you've said that the solution is to stop the raids, but the federal government has said that's not going to happen.
By the way, I'm trying to understand the connection there. People are looting jewelry stores and Apple stores and Adidas stores, and the way that we stop that is by stopping the legal ICE raids?
Well, first of all, when I say a few streets, I don't mean that to mean like it's very small, because the.
No, that's what you've been doing, diminishing this whole thing, saying it's not a big deal when it is. Karen Bass has lost control of her city.
Because the vandalism, especially the graffiti, has happened kind of outside of that. But nevertheless, I'm trying to counter the image that this is happening all over our city because it is not. And so we do want law enforcement to respond aggressively. Anybody that is out committing crimes are not doing.
By the way, she ended that kind of in a question, which means anyone will tell you, she's not being honest about that.
And so we do want law enforcement to respond aggressively.
If they really felt that way, they would take the handcuffs off the LAPD. They would let them crack down. They don't want to see violent confrontations between rioters and the police. Even the ones they say are not the protesters, they don't want to shut that down.
Anybody that is out committing crimes are not doing it in solidarity with immigrants. They are doing the exact opposite. So we have to enforce the law here. I'm going to continue advocating with the federal government, though, to see how disruptive this is. But there needs to be a call that says this is unacceptable, and if you engage in this behavior, you will be prosecuted. Now, we're looking at things like curfews. We're looking at other aggressive response that we can have in case this violence breaks out again.
What time do you think you have to announce a curfew before it goes into effect? Because it's already almost 6:00 PM.
Do you think there will be a curfew?
Let's hear what she has to say about that.
Do you think there will be a curfew? And wouldn't you say that the LAPD is being aggressive?
Well, I do think that they are, but I do think that we need to be in terms of prevention. And I don't mean aggressive in terms of engaging with the crowd, but there's things.
Why would we want to stop people from using a hammer to break apart pieces of the sidewalk to throw at police cars?
But there's things that you can do to prevent. So I had a brief conversation with the chief this morning about a curfew. So we will be meeting about that later on today. And that's the type of aggressive tactic I was referring to.
But apparently, they're still deciding if that's what they're going to do. Karen Bass was asked about the agitators that she says are not part of this protest.
Is calling some of the people who think they need agitators, do we have any indication that that's actually?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so one of the things that Trump said today in his press conference is that some of these people are being paid to destroy the city of Los Angeles, light the Waymos on fire. And let's hear Karen Bass has to say about that allegation.
Absolutely not. I mean, my guess is, is that you have social media phenomena that calls for parties, that calls for street takeovers.
Yes, because lawlessness isn't exclusive to this week. We see lawlessness on the streets of Los Angeles every single weekend, and the police are outnumbered and can't do anything about it. We call them street takeovers.
And I think it's in the same vein. What I do believe very strongly is that the groups that are vandalizing downtown are not a part of the immigrant rights movement.
How about the people right now that are walking up and down the streets of downtown LA, the people who walked on the freeway? Are they part of the protest? Sure are waving a lot of flags.
Are not concerned about immigrants, are concerned about wreaking havoc, and are immigrant rights organizations that have been institutions, well-established, well-respected institutions in our city for.
Really? Because some of the, the press conference from Chirlia, where we played you the sound on Friday of Isabel Yorado and Unicef Hernandez, they sure seem to be fanning the flames that got this thing into full gear.
For decades, are used to doing protests. They are very well organized and coordinated, and they don't tolerate the, the violence. Yesterday's demonstration that was put on by Labor, especially in solidarity with David Huerta, they had a system there where they wouldn't let people in a certain area if they had a mask on.
Huh, boy, how far we've come. All of a sudden, it's not cool to wear a mask. Yeah, good luck on doing that one.
My point is, is that we know how to take care of these issues ourself.
800-222-KABC is the phone number, 1-800-222-5222. Karen Bass is supposed to be having a press conference right now where she may or may not say that there's going to be a curfew. Do you think we need a curfew to shut down this nonsense so it doesn't go into a fifth day? 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222. We'll take your calls. We'll take more sound of Karen Bass. And if she happens to start that presser, we'll take it. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC. I'm sure that you would love to disconnect tonight, not have to keep watching live feeds of riots going on in downtown LA. Maybe you'd like to have a little escapism in your life. Maybe you're watching Love Island USA. Maybe you've got a VPN and you're watching Love Island UK, and then you accidentally forget to turn it off and disconnect from the radio station. What? I didn't do that. Maybe you want to just unplug from all the nonsense that's out there. Well, if you don't want to do that and you want to continue to glue yourself to the insanity, Gavin Newsom is putting out a special address tonight at 6:30. Here's what Gavin put on his Twitter. What we're seeing in Los Angeles goes far beyond Trump's call for deporting criminals. It's a step towards authoritarianism. It's our democracy at a crossroads. Watch live at 6:30 on his social medias or his YouTube page, which means I'm going to have to watch that and then I'll tell you all about it tomorrow. So you don't have to watch it, unless you want to, but I don't know why you would. 800-222-KABC is the phone number. We'll take more of your calls and we'll play more of Karen Bass's presser next on the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC. Here she is, Karen Bass, to introduce the curfew.
Let the city know that I have declared a local emergency and issued a curfew for downtown Los Angeles to stop the vandalism, to stop the looting. Many businesses have now been affected by or vandalized last night.
You mean the looting and the burning? And how many Waymos? I don't know what they have to do with Waymos, but they keep burning them down.
There were 23 businesses that were looted, and I think that if you drive through downtown LA, the graffiti is everywhere and has caused.
Actually, it's been everywhere for a while.
Significant damages to businesses and a number of properties. So my message to you is, if you do not live or work in downtown LA, avoid the area. Law enforcement will arrest individuals who break the curfew and you will be prosecuted. Hundreds of officers from police and sheriff departments from across the region and state are working alongside LAPD through a unified command structure.
But not the National Guard. We don't want their help. The curfew zone is only downtown LA, pretty much between the 110, the 10, and the 5. So the Fashion District, the Arts District, Skid Row, Chinatown.
The curfew will be in place tonight from 8:00 PM until 6:00 AM. I want to thank the governor for his partnership and.
Okay, once she starts thanking people, we can get out of there. Let's go to Dave in Whittier. Dave, hello.
Hey, you know, Newsom, the California Legislature, Bass, and Hakeem Jeffries should be prosecuted for obstruction of justice and aiding and abetting. Also, Newsom's a liar. He's saying that Trump's use of the National Guard is unlawful. No, it isn't. Eisenhower and Kennedy federalized, and Bush in 92, they all federalized the use of the National Guard when they needed it. And also the cost of illegal aliens. 2008 showed that illegal aliens take far more out of the system they put in, and back then, 25% of the jails were occupied by illegals.
I think you make some really strong points, Dave. Of course, Gavin did get defeated in court today on that, but we'll see what he has to say at his address at 6:30. I mean, I'll watch it while I'm cooking. I don't really want to. Let's go to Scott in Hollywood. Scott, hello.
Randy, I don't know what to be, I don't know what's, what to be disgusted about. There's so much, there's so much to be disgusted about, but you know, hearing Imelda Padilla with her bad English, you know, more faster on top, she's a UC Berkeley grad and then Hugo's a UC Irvine grad, and he can't master the word catalytic converter and refers to copper wire thieves as copper wire theft people? I mean, are they passing out DEI degrees at, at the University of California now? That's my question to you.
That is a very, very, very interesting question because yes, these people are supposed to be highly educated from California state schools, and they don't have the best grasp on the English language.
Broken windy theory.
And then also, how does Karen Bass know that the looters aren't the same as the rioters? How could she possibly know that?
Oh, well, she won't tell us. And if that was true, if that was true, then why wouldn't she unleash the full force of the police to crack down on those people? Because a lot of them are the protesters, the ones that are walking on the 101 freeway today.
Absolutely. I'll let you get another caller. Thanks for taking my call, Randy.
Thank you so much for the call, Scott. Appreciate it. Susan writes in at randykabc@gmail.com.